Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our September Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call it to order. And Amber, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Yeah, Wendy Birmingham.
Got to come off your mic.
Here, here.
Robin Bridges.
There she is, okay.
Ms. Chancellor.
Here.
Shanna Jaeger.
Here.
Mac Laznby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nanette Ree.
Here.
Bob Wright and Bob.
Here.
All right. Let's see here, I want to have a look at the participants that we've got going on here, real quick before I say something. Okay. Before we get going, I'd like to just kind of give a brief overview of what we're here for. The commission's going to be presented agenda items by the planning, the city planning department. And the representative, once this, this has been presented, the representative for that particular item has an opportunity to make any comments if they want to. If it's appropriate, then I'll open a public hearing. Sorry about that. I got this crazy camera that just doesn't want to stay. Okay. And during that time, that'll be the time that if you would like to speak on any of these items, that's the time to do it. We just want, we want everybody to be heard. We'd like you to limit your time to speak to five minutes and please keep your comments to the, relevant to the case at hand. We'll have a public hearing for each item, so if, you know, which the one that you're interested in and then we, you can speak during those. The representative, once the, once I close the public hearing, will address any of the issues that came up in the public hearing between the representative and the staff and then we'll have some comments and, and then bring the item to a, have a motion and a vote. The commission votes based on state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and then the general good of the, the community. The other set of items that we're responsible for has to do with approval of subdivision plats. By state Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for all subdivision plats. So with, with regard to these plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and we're bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we've previously adopted. And while public hearings are required on each plat, and we welcome any public comments on these, on these plats, but you have to understand that, that this commission, our authority is strictly limited to confirming whether the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements codified in laws and regulations that I just described. Okay. So basically, just as, since we're on Zoom, the way we, we've been handling it and it seems to work pretty good is if we can, we'll basically keep everybody on, on mute to kind of keep down the feedback and then when it becomes, comes time for public hearings, what I'll do is, I will, I have a way to look and see who's here as an attendee that would like to speak and you have an op, you have a, an ability through the Zoom application to raise your hand. Once you raise your hand, I can turn on your microphone and then you can have, you know, have your say. All right. So let's go ahead and move on and what we'll do is we'll start with citizens' communications. Now, at this time, this is a time for anybody to speak on anything that is not on the agenda or happens to be on the consent agenda. And tonight we have a total of five items on the, the consent agenda, including our meeting minutes. So first thing I would like to do is open the public hearing for citizens' communication. Would anybody like to speak at this time? All right, seeing no one, let's go ahead and move on. There's no old business tonight and so we'll just move right into the consent agenda. Mr. Cotton.
Yes, sir. You have five items on your agenda this evening, on the consent agenda. We have two annexation petitions, a final plat approval request, two subdivision bond extension waiver requests. We, we reviewed these with you in a fair amount of detail at your packet meeting yesterday afternoon, but if any commissioner has a question about any particular item or wishes to pull a item at this time, that's certainly your prerogative. Otherwise, I'm just simply here to answer any questions.
Okay. And the consent agenda requires no public hearing, so is there any discussion or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I approve the five items on the consent agenda, including packet meeting minutes of August the 10th and the regular meeting of August 13th.
Second.
Second.
They have a motion and a second. Amber, can you do a roll call, please?
Yeah, Bridges.
Yes.
Chancellor.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Laznby.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
McCord.
Yes.
Ree.
Yes.
Wright and Ball.
Yes.
Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to new business. The first thing I'd like to start with is a postponement that was requested by the applicant. So this is item number 11, Fernwood RZ, which is recommendation of the city council to place the conservation overlay district on, on 88 acres. This is PL 2020-00300. Do I have a motion to postpone to date certain of 8th October?
Move to until October, our regular meeting October 8th.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries to postpone to a date certain next meeting. Okay, the, let's see, item number six, the text, zoning ordinance text amendment for student housing. Mr., it's PL 2020-00454. Mr. Cotton.
Yes, sir. As the commission is well aware, the city of Auburn's been under a moratorium for two specific types of student housing. For the vast majority of the 2020 calendar year, the current moratorium is set to expire in December. Two housing unit types that we're speaking of specifically are private dormitories of what we more recently have termed and regulated as of 2019 as academic detached dwelling units. You've become quite familiar with these two use types over time. The staff has spent considerable time over the last four or five years very closely monitoring and inventorying and regulating student housing development. One thing that we found and has acknowledged is that by virtue of some of the incentives that we put in place, primarily of the density allowance variety, we have seen of more private dormitory development where we've wanted it than we anticipated and we've gotten it sooner than we expected. We, we recognize that there is officially now an enrollment cap at Auburn University. We have concerns about supply and demand and the, and the readaptability of student housing units because of their unique configurations. And as such, we've made some recommendations from the planning services department at the direction of the city manager to help better regulate and monitor these types of student housing uses moving forward, which has a lot to do with why we've been under a moratorium for the better part of the past year. Specifically, you have two recommendations that you're being asked to consider. One is targeting private dormitories, the other is targeting academic detached dwelling units. The first of which is to reduce the density allowance, the bed density allowance in the UNW district where we've seen the vast majority of our more dense multi-story private dormitory development, essentially a, a reduction of a third or so. Going down from 225 units an acre to 170 beds an acre. By way of comparison, the bed density allowance in the UN East and the UNS on the other side of town is 85 units an acre. So this still provides incentives certainly for development on the west side, but just not as, not as significant density. The most recent private dormitory developments that we've had, in fact, the most recent ones that we've had approved is the largest one we've had approved. And it's also the first one that has actually maxed out the allowable density of 255 beds per acre. So we think it probably makes good sense to, to dial that down a bit, given where we are today versus where we were, say, five years ago. The, or nearly five years ago, the downtown master plan was adopted. The second recommendation, and just to show you some of those density numbers of some of the, some of the existing approved, some are still under development. Most of these have already been constructed, but you can see how those relative densities, let's say if this current recommendation had been in place, none of these would have been built to the density that they, that they could have been. With the exception of the development over, which is west of Donahue, which can only build to 50 feet, hence that's why they were only able to realize 175 beds per acre. So, pretty simple math. Now, as, as the recommendation relates to ADDUs, the staff has recommended and all the details and all the histories in your report, so I don't want to belabor the issue, but recommend a prohibition of ADDUs in the median density residential district. That was one of the zoning districts that was created as part of the implementation of the Harper Avenue focus area study. They were a redevelopment district. Is, that's an area where we, we've seen a lot of ADDU development, much of, most of which was built back when we had RDD in place there. And so, we've, we think this is the right thing to do, given where we're at. The staff has particular interest in seeing the Harper Avenue focus area study, we think it's got opportunities for redevelopment. It doesn't necessarily need to be of the student variety, we think we've got plenty of that already. So we're recommending that we curtail some of that activity by the prohibition in these two respective districts. I will tell you, and I think most of you received these, because I think mostly emails I received today were addressed to the planning commission. We got a lot of emails, I would say in the order of a dozen or so, give or take, from property owners and, and folks in the neighborhood in the RDD area, requesting that ADDUs in fact be prohibited. Clearly, we've already seen a lot of that development there, but they're clearly indicating that they would like to not see more of it moving forward. And you all, like I said, you saw those emails. I did receive one correspondence from a, from a resident that was interested in allowing ADDUs and MDRD specifically to still be conditional as opposed, as opposed to being prohibited, which is what your staff is recommending. Those are the two recommendations. We talked a little bit in packet about some of the work that's going on related to the development and design standards and revisions that are underway with the planning services department and consult with the downtown design review committee. That is well along its way to be able to bring something to you in first in the work session forum and subsequently in a public hearing capacity before the end of the year. As far as the other two items that I've talked about previously, we're ready to move forward on those with you and would appreciate your favorable consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Some basic questions before we open the public hearing. All right. Seeing none, now I'd like to say that the commission during our packet meeting had a, we, we came to a consensus that we would like to address. If you look at these recommendations here, the, the votes and the motions that we're going to be working with are about item number one and number three on this list and we're going to deal with them and have separate votes on them. So I'm going to open the public hearing and what I would like to request of those that would like to speak during the public hearing, let's have comments first on number one, reducing the density from 255 to 270. And then when people that are done speaking on that particular issue, then let's speak separately on the prohibition of ADDUs. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing right now and if you're an attendee would like to speak to this item, please raise your electronic hand. Okay, I see Dana Camp. Let me, now you, you have to unmute your microphone now and you, you should be able to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good. I, I just have a, a few comments because I've listened to the student housing task force as well as you, you all, your conversations during your work sessions. Let me start first, I'm Dana Camp at 142 Plainsman Hills Lane, Auburn.
Thank you.
Okay. I fully support both the text amendments that is under consideration tonight. As stated in your e-packet, the mayor appointed a student housing task force, which met on numerous occasions. The task force requested at its first item of business, an accurate count of all student housing beds in the city. Last October, in a memo by the assistant city manager, a count of 36,508 beds were issued to the task force, along with a statement that duplexes, townhomes, and single-family homes were excluded in the count. The mayor then requested the student moratorium until solutions could be found and we have that moratorium now. It was not to prevent 75-foot tall buildings, it was, as the packet states, to regulate, control, and improve development outcomes of this type of product. The planning staff has offered some excellent steps and I do want to go ahead and, and make my other comment, which is on number two that you're considering. The prohibiting of student housing in the NRD and MDRD zones should be approved. Approving amendment two does not preclude other housing types built in these zones as per table 4.1 in the zoning regulations. Both zones permit by right, single-family, duplexes, townhomes, cottage housing, twin homes, and multifamily developments can be approved under conditional use. I applaud the work of the planning staff for the three amendments that they have come up with and I would hope that the two amendments under consideration tonight would be unanimously approved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hey, thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn back to the commission for questions, comments, clarifications, a motion. And we will talk, we will start, and when we do have a motion, let's, we want to go ahead and have two separate motions when we deal with the, this particular issue.
Bill, I have a couple of comments about this. I'm mainly based on some, some research I did personally in the private sector. Currently under the moratorium, there are zero beds per acre allowed. The task force found that we already have more than enough student housing in a private dormitory type capacity. With the additional of an enrollment cap at Auburn University and based on conversations with private developers, feeling that if it is in our purview, because we've been asked to, to stop this or come up with a way to slow it, that decreasing it to 170 beds per acre will not deter these people from continuing to assemble property and building the large complexes that are currently in place. That is essentially the reason we were given this task in the first place. So, and with those things said, I would like to see it be further reduced, unfortunately, and that's not normally in my, what I feel in my core, but I do in this, in this particular case.
Nanette, do you have a number that you would propose in the form of a motion or not in the form of a discussion?
Well, I mean, you know, I, I would not want to, I realize how we got from the 255 to the 170 and that 85 is in other areas, that's, I don't want to be arbitrary, I don't want to come up with 100 beds per acre because that seems like, I just made that number up and threw it out there and see if it stuck. I do feel like at this point, because it can be changed in the future, that maybe we make all of it 85 beds per acre at this time and see if that helps with, with the growth that we're trying to curb and/or potentially helps with some redevelopment in the area that, you know, we all know could use it. That's not at that massive size.
Go ahead, Warren.
This question is for Forrest regarding Nanette's thoughts in the fact that we, when will this appear on the city council's agenda?
Assuming that you make a recommendation this evening, it would be at your second, it would be at their second meeting in October.
Is that enough time to do some further investigations in order to determine, without being arbitrary, as Nanette says, but to come to some number that may actually accomplish what we want? If indeed what we're proposing here is 170 beds would not do that. In other words, is there any time between now and the council for the council then to modify, if we approve it, to move it on? Tonight?
That's a great question.
And I may not understand, but are you, are you suggesting that if you were to move forward with the proposal as Nanette has suggested, Commissioner Reese has suggested, would that get the staff enough time to either concur with the recommendation or provide an alternative to the council before it gets to council?
Yes. In other words, if we approve it tonight, because I, I, I can't even, Nanette is, doesn't have a number, she, she just has a, her research has shown that this may not be enough reduction to accomplish the purpose we were trying to do with this, that if we do in order to move this on, because the moratorium is about, you know, still on, but it can expire, that if we approve it as recommended here, with the understanding that the city council does have the authority to moderate what we have set. And would that give?
I mean, my guess, and this really to me is, this is where the discretion of the commission comes into play and, you know, my, my response to that is how heavy of a hammer do you want to use? What outcome do you want? The more you diminish that number, the less redevelopment you're going to get. If you don't want any redevelopment at all, then we, if you don't want any redevelopment at all, then we need to reduce the number as suggested and make it the same as what's across town on the other side. If you think there's merit to having modest redevelopment over in the west, we felt like 170 was a sweet spot. It all depends, it all depends on what your objective is. This recommendation was not made with the thought of, with the purpose and intent of ceasing student housing redevelopment in its entirety.
Yeah, I understand that. You're, you're trying to reduce the scale of those student developments as they are developed. That seems to be the, the concern is the, the size of the individual developments. And, and based on what Nanette's research through conversations, at least with those who are in the industry, this 170, reduction to 170 would not accomplish that. I don't know, I, I'm not, I'm not versed enough in this type of development to know, but...
I guess the question that I would ask in response is, when you look at these numbers, I mean, or do we think that, that it would be worth these developers' while? I think that's what Commissioner Reese is suggesting, is that let's say, let's say the numbers that are being suggested at 170 were in place when all these developments came in, would they still get built? I don't know. But what I do know is, is that they're doing everything they can to max out that 255. I can't help but believe if you cut down their entitlement by a third, that's not going to have some kind of impact on future development.
Well, I would think so, but I, I didn't know. Oh, okay.
Well, Nanette, did you have another comment? I think you got.
No. I think that what I've been trying to do, other than, because I was, I was not at the last work session and y'all are aware of that, but, so I went down a road, a path that I knew that I could get some answers for and I realized that that's different for, for all of us. But I also, clarity on our objection, I also absolutely do not want to stop it, halt it like it is right now at zero beds per acre forever, but I did feel like our task was to stop the maximizing and assemblage of property to get the absolute most beds and height out of everything that they could do. That's what I thought our task was. So that's why I'm saying, telling all of you what I found, found out.
Bob, did you have, were you going to make a comment? I just noticed you came off of mute, so I wondered if you had something to say, okay.
Bill, I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Marcus.
Yeah, Forrest, if we have, um, if, if the commission does need a little more time, do we have an artificial timetable, because can the city council push up the moratorium? I mean, you know, extend the moratorium if they need to, I know it's already been done once, but just hypothetically.
Yeah, well, you know, very good question, Marcus. I think had it not been for the, I mean, I, I think there was a sense of urgency until it was determined that the council was, that already, the council then extended the moratorium until December. So that, that does provide some flexibility. The, the point being is whatever regulatory mechanisms we want to put in place and whatever form we want to have them in, we certainly want to have those codified and in place before the moratorium expires. So if there's, if there's something specific that you would like the staff to do to delve into this further before you're comfortable making a recommendation, we can certainly accommodate that, but I think I'm going to need some fairly specific direction because, like I said, I don't, there is no, and Commissioner Reese is exactly correct, there is no magic number here. I think really what it boils down to is, I mean, it, it, how heavy of a hand do you want to take in future redevelopment of student housing in the urban neighborhood west? The, the less you're interested in seeing any future development, redevelopment right now, and that's perfectly fine, then that, then the, then the, the more we draw that number down, the more likely we are to cease that activity. And I think it's really as simple as that. I, I think we could take next month and research it all day long, but I don't think there's ever going to be any particular, shall I say, scientific or precise or, I think it's just a matter of the lower you want to bring that density down, the less likely you're going to get new development and new redevelopment. And if that's what we're trying to accomplish, then yes, we should bring that number down.
You're making, you have a couple of comments that said, if we break, draw the number down, we're not going to get new development, we're just going to get smaller new development, right? I guess some, that's a little confusing to me. We're just not going to get the, the development of these huge high rises.
Well, you're right, you know, it, that's a good point. If you change that number down, then at some point, the market's going to respond to that and that's going to, I would assume, affect property values and property rates and, you know, diminish what people can build.
And if we want to be a little more conservative, this is just a, you know, what if? If we want to be a little more conservative, couldn't we go forward with a recommendation to the, the city council still has to approve this, right? So if we said, okay, let's say 85 all the way through here, they could still bring it back up if they decide they want, you know?
The city council can do whatever, whatever the city council wants to do regardless of what your recommendation is, but like I said, the thought with the 170 versus, the 170 versus the 255 versus the 85 on the east was the staff's thought was that it was still providing some incentive for new development, redevelopment, student housing variety to want to locate over the UNW. If we draw it down to 85, and I presume we created a fairly level playing field between the UNE and UNS and the UNW. What I do know is, the one student housing development that I recall proposed in the UNE was, was not really a lot of, it wasn't an enjoyable experience for all involved. And, and so I was, was not really a lot of, it wasn't an enjoyable experience for all involved. And, and so I think, I, I don't particularly want to encourage more unenjoyable experiences. And, and I think, I think if we put the UNE in the UNS, we're going to see more activity over there. And with the diversity in the area, you've got more single-family neighborhoods, I'm not one that recommends that we take ourselves down that path.
Yep. Can I, can I throw my two cents, you know, there too on that? I appreciate Nanette's thought of, we want to make sure that the reduction is enough to help with some of the, the larger scale development. But if I recall correctly, we spent a good deal of time when we created these zones and the densities to, to begin with, we wanted to encourage that development of student housing in the UNW as opposed to the UNE and the UNS. So I don't, I don't mind a change in the number, but I am concerned about bringing it all the way down to 85. Because I'm, like Forrest just said, there has been much more contiguous discussion about student housing in the UNE and the UNS than down the UNW where the intent was to encourage more student development closer to, to campus. If, if I'm understanding the way we, we rezoned and set those densities originally.
Yeah, that's, that sounds, that sounds right.
I'm, I'm inclined to agree because it's, it seems that there has been a lot of research put into this, the way it's presented to us now, and I don't disagree with Commissioner Reese, but the issue would be, you know, if you, if you do reduce it, then you probably have to go down to the 85 because any other number between 17 and 85 is arbitrary. Like, where did that number come from? So in that case, and plus the, the city, city council can do what it wants. And so, you know, if we're going to vote on it, I think maybe we should just vote as is presented and then let the city council decide what they're going to do from there.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Hearing this discussion and as long as it's been analyzed and viewed, and in fact, there's not a truly academic number that could be determined, I think the staff has done quite well in their recommendation of 170 beds is, as he described, is a sweet spot there to to reduce the incentive for these larger, more dense buildings and kind of get it under control, which we're trying to do and not to eliminate it. And I would move that we approve an item six on the agenda, the reduct, to reduce the density allowed for private dormitories from 250 beds per acre to 170 beds per acre in the UN dash W zoning district.
I'll second-
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, Amber, please give us a roll call vote.
Bridget?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazznby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Let's go ahead and talk about the other item, which is related to the prohibit, or inhibit, the prohibition of ADDUs in MDRD and NRD. Any discussion? Or a motion?
Was there no more anybody to, you'd separated the public hearing for these two items.
Yes, but we, well, we-
Anybody wanting to address the second item? I know Ms. Camp did both, but somebody may be waiting just to do the second.
Yeah, they, I, we, I've stated before the public hearing, we'd be covering both items. I just asked that people kind of addressed them separately and we only had one in the public hearing, so.
Phil, I, I think that, that, I, I think people might have thought that we were only opening the public hearing for the number one. I think there are several people on the list that plan to speak. I'm just, just looking down the, the names. I, I don't, I may be wrong in that, but I do think there, there were some people that wanted to speak specifically to ADDU.
In danger of prohibition by reopening the public hearing, just to clarify that issue?
Yeah, that's a procedural, you know, I, I felt like I was pretty clear about that, so. I'm going to go ahead and say the public hearing is closed and we're looking for a, a motion or further discussion among the planning commission.
You guys find me?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Robin.
No. Go ahead, Jana.
No, I was just going to say that we talked a lot yesterday in our packet meeting, but I, I would like to, and I know we've heard a lot from the residents in the, in our D about wanting this to be prohibited. Not so much from the MDRD residents. I, I do know there's a history of rezoning. We had work sessions and master plans for both of these areas very, very recently in the past, within the past couple of years. And then we had the, the creation of the ADDUs. And I know in many of these areas, they were originally permitted, and then they have since been rezoned and made conditional use. So that's a lot of changes within the past couple of years already. My preference would be that we continue to leave these as conditional use and examine them on a case-by-case basis. I personally think the NRD and the MDRD are two very different areas anyway, and I'm not sure that they should be considered simultaneously, but I'm, I'm fine to do that with the recommendation that we leave them as conditional. But I, you know, I feel like the planning department put a lot of work into the master plan with the original recommendations, and we've made a, a lot of changes over the past couple of years already. And I, I like the ability to have them as conditional use and us be able to examine each one as they come before us. Because the recommendation may be different even within the same zone, depending on, you know, where it's located within the, in the, in the zone and, and other factors. So that's, that's my thought would be my recommendation.
Anyone else?
I don't know. Well, I don't know that I would have, I don't know that I would have said it. As well as that, but I echo Jana's sentiments. The, the staff and the community who participated has done exhaustive work as Jana alluded to in these, in these zones with the studies and the input and then the subsequent changes. And I just don't see an appropriate reason that they should be changed when we can consider them on a case-by-case basis in the conditional status.
I will, I will second Ms. Emmett for Robin because I feel like these very different than I feel like the other large private dormitory situation is that these were just an unintended, unintended consequence of being student housing related. I don't find them to be similar, and I do like the idea of them being conditional use in these areas.
Any further discussion or a motion?
The staff's done considerable research and has made a recommendation to us based on their professional opinions and good judgment. Even though there were not many at the public hearing tonight that got a chance to speak, I think we've gotten many emails and, and writing the neighborhood, public people that are there that live in those neighborhoods really would like to prohibit any more student housing. And those people that have allowed that, maybe they could be grandfathered in or count their blessings. They've been able to enjoy it for as long as they have, but I, I think from continuity in the recommendation, I, I'm more inclined to go with the staff recommendation.
I can second that motion.
Is that a motion?
A motion?
Did I hear? Are you proposing a motion, Mac?
I would propose it as a motion that we prohibit ADDUs in the MDRD and the NRD districts in order to protect future redevelopment opportunities.
I was going to add a comment.
Let's have a, let's have a motion, but let's have a second before we have more comments. Let's get the motion down. We've had, we have a motion on, on the table. Let's have a second.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Go ahead, Robin.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in, in response, I guess, to Mac's comment, I actually have heard individually from, and do on a regular basis, from lots of property owners and lots of people who are, who are not in favor of prohibiting it. And people are, you know, they have their own reasons for sending their comments to the staff or to the commission as a whole. And I mean, I'm not here to say that that's right or wrong. I do say there has been a lot of opposition to making that is what we are, you know, placing our considerations on. I just want to make sure that it's, that, you know, people are out there. They just, for whatever reason, may not share the opinion with the staff or the entire-
Thanks. Okay, any further discussion? All right, Amber, let's have a roll call vote on this one.
Bridget?
No.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
No.
Lazznby?
Yes.
Marshall?
No.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
What's that vote there, Amber?
F54 to approve.
So motion, motion, motion carries. Okay, item number seven. Gibson Property rezoning. It's the first of two. This is PL 2020 00156. Ms. Robison.
Good evening. This is a request from Bada LLC concerning the property that was, you guys just considered on consent, the Gibson property for annexation. The next four cases are concerning the same property. The property is located on North College Street on the west side across from Perry Creek Crossing and south of the Auburn Fisheries. They are requesting to rezone 154.3 acres from rural to DDH. So the land use, the future land use in that area is low-dency residential, which is in alignment with the DDH zoning district. And we do recommend approval. I did not receive any correspondence on this case. And we do recommend approval with staff comments.
Thank you. David Slocum, would you like to have a say before we get started?
No, thank you. Just here to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing on this rezoning. Would anybody would like to speak, please raise your electronic hand. Okay, I'm seeing a couple pop up here. All right, Mr. Hayes, go ahead and come off your microphone.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, Nick Hayes, 333 Brookside. I would just like to point out that the public hearing rules set out on the last item were unclear at best. And as I understood it, we were public commenting on each one specifically, and you, Phil, asked specifically if anyone wanted to comment about ADDUs, wait until we got to that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams, go ahead and come on off your microphone. You have to unmute. There you go.
Robert Williams, the son of property owner at 1662 North College. Just curious on the, only thing I'm more concerned about is utility hookups in that area. Have they made any plans on that?
Okay, yeah, we can, we can, we can address that. Is that the only concern you have?
Yeah, like sewage, water, how's that looking right now?
All right, we'll have the city engineer comment after we close the hearing. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak on this item? Oh. Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask Ms. Frazier, can you discuss the utilities in that area?
Yes, good evening. We don't have the engineering plans yet. I do think there's a sewer line along the Sagahatchee Creek, which is the north side of the property. And I think there's a water line on College Street, but at this point, we don't have that information from the engineer. But if David Slocum is available, he may know of how he's planning to connect to those utilities.
Yeah, Mr. Slocum, can you address that in some fashion? You have to unmute.
She's correct. There's an existing sewer main along Sagahatchee Creek that we'll be connecting to. And there's also an existing water main on North College that will connect it.
Is that, is that the entirety of utilities? Because that was a pretty broad question. So is it just the sewer main and the water main, or are there other utilities that are involved in that area as well? Or is that just part of the design package? You just, once you get, get further down the road?
When we get further along, we'll be, we'll be finding connection points for other utilities, but power is available. Cable is available. Phone is available. Gas is available.
Okay.
The exact connection points have not been determined at this time.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item PL 2020 00454 as presented.
05, that's 0015-
I'm sorry, yeah. 100156, thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Go ahead, Amber.
Bridget?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazznby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, Gibson, another Gibson property rezoning, this time from rural to CDD. This is PL 2020 00157. Ms. Robison.
That's correct. This second request is to rezone from rural to CDD. The property is- The property is right here in the southeast corner. It's 2.2 acres. And the future land use designation is still in this area is low density residential. And while the future land use does not align with a commercial zone, it is consistent with the surrounding zoning. Across the street is the Perry Creek PDD, which is a mixed-use development, commercial and residential. So it is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And again, we do recommend approval with staff comments.
Okay, thank you. This item also requires a public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing and if anybody would like to speak, please raise that electronic hand. All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve PL 22220, 2020 00157 as, with staff comments.
Motion and a second. Amber?
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, Gibson Property Plan Development District Designation, PL 2020 158. Ms. Robinson.
This next request is to apply a planned development district overlay to the entire Gibson property, which comprises 156 and a half acres. The underlying zones, of course, would be DDH in this portion here and CDD on these 2.2 acres here. The development contemplates 114 residential units that would be comprised of duplexes and flat complexes. It would be a multiple unit development. So all of those would be on one lot. Uh oh. Sorry. So the residential units would be on one lot and would comprise approximately 64 acres. The remaining 85 acres would be this open space area here that has a trail proposed. In addition to a, so they will take access off of a private drive here off of the extension of Perry Creek Parkway. We have a, the major street plan calls for a connection from North College to North Donahue via the extension of Perry Creek Parkway. So they will extend that here and then a private drive would be used to access the commercial and the residential. There is an additional curb cut up on the north that would access a parking lot and a restroom facility for users of the Sagahatchee Blueway Greenway. All right. I believe you guys, someone asked at the packet meeting yesterday if they, if there were gates in this development. And there is, there is a gate proposed at this location and then another one at this location here. The open space that's required for the development is just over 20 acres. And including this area up here, as well as the additional open space that's provided down in the residential area, there's approximately 106 acres of open space. And we do recommend approval for the planned development district and did not receive any correspondence for this as well.
Thank you. I've got one question. Did you say that this open space is publicly accessible or not?
I believe that's the applicant's intent. They probably provide more information in that regard. I know that they are contemplating some kind of dedication of some of that property to the city. But we have not had discussions with staff to determine that quite yet.
Sure would be nice. Okay. All right, well, thank you. This one requires a public hearing as well, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Please raise your hand. All right, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
Ms. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item number nine on the agenda. Approval with staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Amber?
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Having already dealt with item number 11, we'll move to item number 12, which is rezoning at Ashton Lakes, PL 2020 00458. Ms. Kennedy?
Hey, Phil, there's one more case regarding the Gibson property. That's the conditional use request for the offices.
I skipped right over. I'm sorry. I take, let's go back to item number 10. My apologies. Gibson Property Conditional Use, which is 2020 00221. This is conditional request for a conditional use approval for an office use. Ms. Robinson?
That's correct. This is the final case of the Gibson property that's on your agenda for the evening. This is a request for office uses to locate in this area here. And they are contemplating approximately 18,000 square feet of office space. As I mentioned, the development across the street in Perry Creek is a mixed-use development with commercial as well as some offices back on the, just south of Perry Creek Parkway. And we recommend approval on this one as well.
Okay, thank you. This requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing for case 00221, the conditional use. Anybody would like to speak on the public hearing? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or a motion.
Question for Kate. I have a question for Katie first. Do we know, have you talked with the developer about the appearance of these buildings from North College Street? What the backs of these buildings will look like visually?
Yeah.
I have not received any elevations, although it looks like it will have double front doors. I'm assuming these are doors that will face college.
Yeah, I, I believe it's kinda like a residential equivalent or a non-residential equivalent of like a rear-loaded townhouse where the, the front facades will front college and you'll basically come into the building. In fact, they may basically have double front facades. But I think the intent is to make it look like a front facade along the college frontage in particular.
Ms. Chairman, I've got a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Some of these conditional uses, we've been concerned about public access to these public buildings through private roads. And I don't know if this new private road is built to city standards or why it doesn't make it a public roadway, at least up to where the gates are into the private community to provide access, public access.
Is that, is it an engineering issue? I guess I wouldn't, who can address that on staff?
Yes, once we get to the engineering plans, we do have standards for private streets. They have to build them to our standards, even though they're still private. So they should be able to withstand any of the normal loads that are on normal city streets.
Is there any chance an owner could close that street, restrict access for some reason? It's not, it's not a public street.
Yes, he could. The, the only portion that will be public is the main entrance coming off of North College. And in our staff report, we did make note about the extension, yes, right there, the extension to the west, which will be a future connector road to North Donahue Drive. But as with other commercial or mixed-use developments, if they're private streets, the developer technically has the right to close those to the public.
I would just be concerned that we could make that north-south section public. I think it may benefit the future public use and, and kinda be consistent with what we've done in many of the other developments.
Mr. Lazenby, the developer doesn't have an objection to that?
That would be, okay, so, so if we approve it, that would be a public street. If we approve it tonight, that, that would be a public street.
We're okay with that. Making it public to the gates is, is not a problem.
Yeah, it's a condition. It would have to be a condition of the, with the motion.
I'd move to approve item 10 on the agenda with the condition that the north-south roadway, it's listed as new private street, be a public thoroughfare.
Now, ask a question.
No, that was a motion.
That is a motion. I move to approve item 10 on the agenda as a condition that the private drive, private north-south street be made public street, which the developer has concurred they, they would do.
One second.
I mean, I'm going to second it for, for further discussion right after.
Yeah, we're gonna have it. You want a second motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion.
So Allison, do you want to say something before you ask the question? So what, what's on your mind? What's the concern?
Sorry, I didn't, and I didn't mean to interrupt. I guess I'm just trying to clarify the need for that to be a public street, just because it's going to serve the offices. In our discussions with the developer, if we work out a, an agreement for access to the greenway, that would be via a public easement and we would invoke a development agreement to make that happen. So I'm just trying to make sure we don't, we don't necessarily need that additional infrastructure to maintain just for access to a potential greenway access. My preference would be for it to remain a private street since it's just serving the offices and would serve a condominium type development.
I would agree with that, so the city does not have to maintain the additional road. If the developer and the development is agreeing to maintain their own private road, that's an expense that the city does not have to absorb.
Agreed.
So do I hear an amendment?
I was gonna say, Mac, are you willing to amend your motion?
If somebody makes an amendment, I'd be glad to hear it.
Well, I would amend the motion to approve the conditional use but not require that the new, the, the, the third, the, the street that is called New Private Street be a public road.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion on that.
I would second that. I would add staff comments, though.
Yes.
With staff comments without the public right of way, I mean, public street.
That's what you meant, right, Mr. McCord?
That is right.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion and a second on an amendment. Amber?
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, now we go back to the original motion, which would, would be approval with all staff comments, as I recall. Is that correct? And so it basically approved as written is what the, the motion is now on the table.
Motion is approved as, approved as amended.
What we amended is the same thing what that was.
Yeah, okay.
We removed the amendment, basically, right?
No, well, no, we removed the condition.
Oh, that's right. We removed the condition, okay. So let's make sure we, I gotta rephrase the motion. Who, who made the original motion? I don't recall now.
Mac made the original motion and then Dr. McCord did the amendment. And so now we have to vote on the amended version.
Which, which would be, which would be approving this?
What was presented.
Right, the original presentation. So it's, it's approved without that, without that additional condition.
Subject to all staff comments.
And staff comments, right. Okay, go ahead, Amber.
Bridges? Yes, sorry, Amber.
That's okay.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now we'll move down to item number 12, Ashton Lakes rezoning, PL 2020 00458. Ms. Kennedy?
Good evening. So see, this is a rezoning to request 189 properties be rezoned from CDD to DDH. Staff received communication from 119, I'm sorry, 120 of the 184 homeowners within this area. And 119 were in approval of this rezoning. Specifically, they would like to redistrict to DDH to be more in character with the surrounding area and the neighborhood itself and to limit the unrelated residents to the DDH definition, which is the traditional family definition, rather than the five unrelated allowed within CDD. The property was originally zoned as CDD in 1992 in a proposed development that is not what is actually taking place here. Because of the overwhelming approval of the homeowners within the area, staff is recommending approval. I received a significant communication mainly for information about this and general favor of the law.
Okay, thank you. This item requires a public hearing, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing now. And if you are an attendee would like to speak on this item, this rezoning item, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I will ask, I'll close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
On item, on item 12, the little bit unusual for staff not to have any comment on water and sewer. Is there some flag being raised here or is it just not? Is there some flag being raised here, or is it just not a issue to be considered?
No, no, this is, Matt, this is essentially the built-out subdivision, so all services are in place. This is actually being done primarily for purposes of this single-family neighborhood not having to potentially allow to five unrelateds for occupancy purposes. So this puts them in a zoning that is more in keeping with essentially the character of the neighborhood.
Move to approve item twelve on the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Let's move on to item number thirteen, Donahue Ridge Phase Seven rezoning, PL twenty twenty zero zero four five nine. Ms. Kip.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a second of three requests related to this property. It was in your consentant for annexation. Property is owned by East South Two Incorporated. Their authorized representative is Brett Baslin for Site Group. The property consists of approximately fifteen point three nine acres, more or less, as to the south of previous phases of Donahue Ridge and across from Camden Bridge. The property is requesting rezoning from rural to DH. And the rezoning is in line with the future land use designation of residence, the residential. Here's an exhibit of the property to be requested for rezoning in an aerial. I did not receive any comments or questions from the public.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baslin, would you like to have a say before we get started?
We have to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. If you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ron.
For Brett, I guess. Is the property owner of this piece the same as the piece just to the north of it that we're looking at that's wooded?
Yes. Same, same person, and those lots are developed now.
Um.
The two lots on Donahue, though.
You might be talking about the out of, out of the county or out of the city.
Yes, those, yeah, whoever's working the arrow, perfect, right there. Why, I mean, I was just curious about why we're doing this weird little shape and not taking those other pieces in with it.
I, 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 I mean, there's really, they're trying to get the residential there. I think they're leaving that in the county because they don't know exactly what the use will be.
All righty. Thank you.
Hey, so do I have a motion?
I move to approve staff comments.
I'm sorry, Warren, did you have something to say first?
I was just going to make a comment that the reason they're left out of the city limits is that we have no control therefore over those, and they could put whatever they choose to put there without, without our, as far as the use is concerned, without our involvement. If it's subdivided, it will have to come before us.
Right.
But as far as use, that, that sort of makes, I wish they would bring it in. Alabama has such a weird annexation code law, but the, these properties, these residential people are somewhat vulnerable to whatever may happen out there. But that's nothing we can deal with tonight.
Right. Okay.
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Non-ette made the motion, and we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Amber.
Bridges? Yes. Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number fourteen, Donahue Ridge Phase Seven, PL twenty twenty oh four six six. This is a preliminary plat for a conventional subdivision. Mr. Kip.
Sir, this is same property that you've recommended approval for rezoning to DH. Say, conventional subdivision consisting of fifty-one single-family attached lots, one remnant lot and one lot for future development. The staff recommends approval and did not receive any comments. Here is the posed preliminary plat. Single-family lots, one lot for future development in the county and the remnant parcel. And did not receive any correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing as well. So I'm going to open the public hearing now and ask for, that was open, by the way, not a closed. Anybody that would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, ask for questions, comments, or a motion.
I move to approve Donahue Ridge Phase Seven preliminary plat. With, will the annexation happen and the rezoning? It's good.
I have a motion and a second. Amber, go ahead, unless there's any discussion. Sorry about, forgot to ask. Okay, go ahead, Amber.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now to the last item, number fifteen, Sanders Street Townhomes. PL twenty twenty zero zero four six seven. This is a request for a waiver to Buffyard Regulations. Jay Howell, please.
Good evening. The applicant seeking a waiver to Buffyard Regulations, specifically to allow a Buffyard with no fencing where a structure type two fence is required. Subject property is here in a screen in the neighborhood redevelopment district at the end, just south of the intersection between West Drake Avenue and Sanders Street. It is a recently developed four-unit townhome, which you see here. In blue is the footprint of the building itself. In orange are the areas that a Buffyard with the fencing requirement is required. The reason it's required is because this development as a whole is considered a Class VII, and the conventional, so conventional single-family homes on either side of these two boundaries are classified as Class II in a situation that fences are required. The applicant has said installing the fence would require eliminating a lot of the trees that they were able to preserve through the course of, through the course of destruction. This is a picture looking north of, from across the street, the house to the south, and you can see the, you can see the the effect of the existing trees there. This is a close-up of that specific boundary. You can see how the, seeing how a lot of the old growth has been maintained. This is on the opposite side, on the north. There's a fence already there, although it's a little bit lower, and it does have a lot of trees, especially as you go back here towards the back. There's the area. Staff is in agreement with the applicant. They would probably do a better job, the trees would do a better job than the fence board is buffering it. We've not, so we do recommend approval. We've not received any correspondence. However, the applicant has shared communication he's received from both the neighbors from the north and the south in support of his application. And the applicant is on the line, so getting any of your questions for staff.
All right, thank you. This does not require a public hearing, so I'm going to just go ahead and ask for questions, comments, or a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve twenty twenty zero zero four six seven.
A second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd offer an amendment to the motion that the waiver only be good as long as the landscaping exists. That's the reason we're giving the waiver, because of the trees, and that's a good thing to do, but if should they disappear for any reason, I think the waiver ought to disappear. And I'll offer that as amendment, that the waiver only, only is good as long as the landscaping exists.
Okay, we have an amendment on the table. Do we have a second?
Second amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Amber, go ahead and give, give us a roll call for this amendment.
Sure. Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, that, the amendment carries, so now let's vote on the amended motion. So we do have a, so let's go ahead, Amber, and then give us another roll call.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wrighten Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us towards the end. I would like to make a comment in chairman's communication and apologize to the staff, the commission, and the public for the confusion that I caused during the zoning amendment, the text amendment. While that wasn't as clear as it should have been or could have been, I didn't feel that going forward with the way I proceeded was still warranted because we had some good information on that item. I think we had a lot of input from the public. So I feel like, you know, it was, that it was appropriate for us to move along, but I do apologize for the confusion. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Cotton. Is there anything from the staff?
No, sir, not at this time. As I mentioned previously, we're going to, we're going to be reviewing the the video from our short-term run-of-work session and making some adjustments and coming back to you with something as and as soon as, as soon as a time as we can, and otherwise we hope everybody has a good rest of September and look forward to seeing you next month.
All right. Okay, everybody, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.
Evening, everyone.
Good night. Good evening.